Megan Kelly, Peter Coffin. To my left is Larry Greenbaum. And my immediate left is Susan Eyre. Our recording secretary and our elected chairman. We have several items of business to take care of before we proceed to the hearing. And the first one is to elect a new chair and vice chair. Mr. Greenbaum.
Chairman. First of all, let me thank you for your service. And I would like to nominate Peter Coffin as chair and Megan Kelly as vice chair.
Great. Are there any other nominations?
I'm going to do this one.
You don't have to.
Okay.
There must be other nominations.
I would prefer to nominate Larry. Sorry. Larry, as a vice, continue as vice chair if you're willing to do it.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that we have new people. I think they should get involved and that's a good way to learn.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I'm familiar with how Robert's work order worked. I've never actually done them, but I'm willing to learn and get them.
And I think this is going to be a good way for you to learn. It's not necessarily strict. It's not necessarily strict, Robert's rule.
Yeah, I was going to say.
It's admirable. They modify what they think but to maintain order and make sure that it is an easy process, a flow of information. And I think your meeting, vice chair, would be a great way for you to learn. And you know what? None of us are abandoning you, so it's not like you're going to be up in a vacuum.
I would absolutely accept that nomination.
Great. So if there are no other nominations, then I'll ask the secretary to cast one vote for a unanimous election of the new offices for the case's onboard adjustment. So, yeah. And that's a rather loose order proceeded to go through. So I wish you both good luck. I'm here if you need me. And I'm just going to move over here. Mr. Chairman, you not giving a...
Not yet. And I really want to say again, what Sarah said about all your trips. I know you talked about being off at the end of this coming year. But we know that you've done everything for the town of Kingston and called me for the town of Kingston.
I've tried.
Never, never has anybody ever said that what you were doing, that I've heard what you were doing was in some way to the negative benefit of Kingston.
No, Kingston, I haven't screwed up once in a while.
That's not. We screwed up, we did it with the intention of...
With good faith.
With good faith of how Kingston...
Like I said, I'm not going in there to see it over there, so you guys carry on.
So the first item on the order is to approve minutes from last month. We have to figure out, but... Do I hear a motion to approve minutes after 13:00?
It's... I always defer to you because you were the one that held them so well.
Yeah, I did, and I didn't find anything.
That being the case, I will ignore it, except for the minutes as before.
Second.
Can I abstain? I wasn't... Out of the meeting, I'm thinking.
Well, let me tell you something about that. We had, about two years ago, we had a training session with New Hampshire Municipal Association on the right to know law. And they were emphatic about not abstaining from voting. And our duties as elected official was to vote, even when we weren't present on minutes. And I agree with Rick. I always thought you abstained when you weren't present.
Yeah.
They told us no. We were elected to vote in the agenda before us.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any vote? And as we determine the extensions? So we've got that. We did receive an email from the administrative assistant for the ZBA in Brentwood. They are having a training session for ZBA decision-making process on May 12th, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And if we have anybody who'd like to go to that, it's going to be in-person. You get to talk to Steve Buckley, who gave us that session and is amusing. He's well-informed. Any rate, that would be 4:00 to 6:00 on May 12th. So if anybody's interested, speak up now because we have to let Andrea know by Friday, I think, because...
She'd like to go by Friday.
Yeah.
I watched it yesterday. I'd go again. I'd take it twice to make sure that it's out.
It's going to be at the Brentwood Town Office and its decision-making process. It's going to focus on that for two hours. We'll share the process with Brentwood and one other town that they were invited to join there.
I thought it was at the Rec Center or...
Sorry.
It says here on the email, it says, "Robert Town Office."
The office.
Okay. And I am signed up for the two Saturday sessions for the OSI, Office of Strategic Initiatives, the new name for the planning office in Concord session. So I'm going to do that. And but if, and that's free, by the way. If you want to sign up for it, if you've never been, they're always available on Zoom. So it's...
It's online.
It's online, yeah.
Yeah, I signed up for that, too.
Yeah, so... My theory's always been that I can't get enough training, especially now. So, all right, we will let her know. And then we have a request for rehearing by Yamiche Oaks regarding Charm Sciences. And did anybody else get that? I can't remember if that was emailed.
I said you all have a clock in the chamber. It's not for discussion this evening. It would, because it's not on the agenda. It came in last Thursday, I believe it was. So it was too late to include on the agenda.
Okay, because I saw it on the agendas. Or is this, was this one that you posted online? Because it looked like it was there.
This is the revamp agenda.
The hearing, the items I have on the board business, I listed for you, for you to follow on for the meeting. It's not on the posted...
Oh, it's not, okay. The reason being that we have 30 days from when it's received, which is a subset to either say yes, no, or suspension, in which case, if we're not prepared to discuss it, it's not something for a public hearing.
You can't discuss it. I checked with Senator Calvin. It has to be on the agenda for us.
Okay, so that's, I just...
So it goes to the next available ZBA meetings, which would be the May 12th.
May 12th. Unfortunately, that's outside the 30-day window that we're required to respond. So...
So you have to have another meeting.
We have to hold...
The only other way, because you know that they have a legal notice.
Unless they waive their right to the 30 days. You know, maybe that's another possibility. They could waive their right to 30 days, a decision within 30 days, I spoke. If they wanted to, they'd have to do it right now.
And the legal posting term is what? How many days is it for posting, not for hearings, but for...
Well, for hearings.
Seven days?
Seven days.
I thought it was five.
Yeah.
Five business days.
Five business days. And it's been a legal notice, so that the meeting, we would have to hold in order to decide this. It would have to be at least a week.
Well, one way would be to have the ZBA meeting on May 5th, the first Thursday of March, because that would be two days...
That would be...
...a 30-day window. And you don't have to go to the advocate to see if they waive their right to...
It's a second.
Well, if the 12th is the second Thursday of the month and the 5th is, I mean, let's check.
The Thursday, the May 5th is the first and the 12th is the second.
Right, so we could have it May 5th. In which case you'd have your zoning board a week earlier for the month of May.
Yeah, I think that's probably the best solution, so that we don't get outside...
And your deadline for in any other applicants is next Wednesday at noon.
Okay.
The third Wednesday of the month is the deadline for your application, so that you could get time to get the...
Get the notice in, so... Third Wednesday.
Which is next week.
At noon, okay, so, and we could post it. That would give us time to get that posted and...
And you get it in the paper, right? Still have the time.
Okay, so I would entertain a moment, a motion to move the next ZBA meeting up by a week.
So move the 5th.
To the 5th of May, yeah. Second, okay. Motion by Rick, second by Larry. And we can, we'll take care of it. Any notices in? Is any applicants, do you know if you've received any applications?
Nothing yet.
Yeah, so...
They usually come in last minute.
Okay.
Be that day as it were.
I think that's the best solution. I think we're not...
So we will notify both parties.
Well, they're not going to be speaking.
They will call... Yeah, we're just going to visit on the draft and send out everybody a letter before the meeting.
That's just for us to decide whether we want to...
To have a hearing, in which case then we have to do a posting. It would be the next June meeting. You did postings, the notification, the rest.
And it's, it's not a hearing, it's a public, public meeting.
Public meeting. It's not, it's not...
Not a hearing. I think that was what you said, Senator told us, and that's what it said in the...
Correct.
In the RSA.
That's correct.
Okay, I think we can dispense relatively quickly.
Which is why your minutes are important. We leave the minutes to see what we do, because it was last meeting's hearing.
Right.
So you need to see if, whether there are issues of genuine will.
Right, and I did do that, so... But the fact that nobody else has gotten that, the board hasn't gotten that letter, means we can't get it, get posted. That's, that's got to be postponed, so that's May 5th.
So point of order.
Yeah.
We think we still need to vote on that motion.
Right. We've had a first, seconded, all in favor of next meeting being May 5th.
Aye.
Any objections or extensions? Pass unanimously. And moving right along, we have Clancy Krueger and Scott Finlayson of 24 Great Pond Road. Why don't you guys come up to the seats up here? I will say that I try to keep my voice a little up. We get a little cute when we see people, but these microphones on the table in front of you are the ones picking you up. So in order to be heard on the court, you need to say your names and where you live and speak freely.
I'm Clancy Krueger. I live at 24 Great Pond Road, Kingston, New Hampshire.
I'm Scott Finlayson. This is my wife. She's taken a little longer than we thought to change her last name to Finlayson, but she is my wife.
Make that sound like a possessive.
I'm working.
You're going to be careful.
I know.
I'm from here, didn't necessarily change their name.
And with that, Clancy, tell you. Oh, 24 Great Pond Road, Kingston, New Hampshire. Okay, thank you.
Don't ignore you.
Pity for being Mr. Clancy, yes. Mr. Krueger, let's see. So...
You should read, you should read the legal notice.
Yes, I'm trying to find it. There it is. This is tax map uses for lot seven. It's a public hearing whereby the applicants seek a variance to the terms of Article 205, section 9A of the town Kingston zoning ordinance and ask that the terms be waived to prevent continuance of non-conforming use. The ZBA may also determine that a second variance may be required for Article 205.4B, the shoreland protection from this regarding lot coverage. And so, why don't you present the plan? And let's see. Well, we've got an package. Everybody got to the folder with the plans and stories?
Yes, I think I do. Okay.
Yeah, so the blueprint for the addition is labeled A. And we have that on the 11 by 17 paper. So what you're looking at is our existing house with the addition on it. So it's not the addition alone. So I want to highlight what is the addition portion for you guys. So if you are, you want to have this facing closest to you. So you make sure the pond is away. So this, if you're looking at the front of the house, you'll see a little hallway in front of the two bathrooms. That would be part of the addition. That's four foot by 14 feet. So I'll, I can also show you here. See this area right here in the bathroom? This hallway is part of the addition.
Existing foundation.
Oh, sorry.
There it is, four foot by, that's this one here, yeah. Page five.
Sorry, it's A.
You can see it on multiple.
Right.
We have the foundation plan, then we have this one here. We have a few different plans, and we can see it on. Just talk about the ones labeled A. I think they're labeled A.
Oh, I see. Third one, right corner.
Whatever, I see it.
Okay. And then the, so that's the beginning part of the addition there. And then this 14 by 28 section with the two bedrooms is also part of the addition. So in total, it's 448 square feet for the addition.
What is it now?
The existing house is, I want to say 980, but let me get it right.
Yeah, right.
That's on...
Exhibit C.
On C. So the existing house is 1,088.
What's that?
448.
Yeah, I think the existing, we're allowed to go 400, I think.
Yeah.
So we applied for the...
Conditional use, yeah.
Well, we, we didn't do that yet because we had to go at first through DES for the, for that permit. And then we went back to Robert, and I think he realized we had to go to this step, to the conditional use. And then since it was over 400, we had to apply for the variance. So that's, that's why we're here now, for that additional 48 square feet.
Right. And I probably should say now, the first request that came in, Robert Stewart's letter, quoted the wrong paragraphs, we did change it before it got posted.
Yes, yep.
And you saw the letter?
Yep. It was sent with a note.
So for the better, anybody who saw the old notice, we now have the correct thing on that.
Yep.
So, and obviously state also that requirements for a variance are usually more stringent than they are for CUPs, which if you meet the requirements, that being what I'm getting to is that if for some reason your variance does not pass here, that would not prevent you from getting a CUP if you took 47 feet, square feet off it, if you redesigned it and went down to 400 square feet, you'd have a pretty good chance.
Yep.
But that's a different board and a different process, so... Don't think that it's all nothing.
Okay, thank you.
So the, the design that we chose, I don't know if you guys want to hear this, but really, we probably drafted this six different times with six different ways of looking at it. We bought this house in Kingston because we loved the charm. It's this old stone house. Actually, a member of the Rockingham Sheriff's Department, his uncle grew up in the house and he kind of, he actually stopped by the house and gave us a backstory, which was really cool, because we didn't have that. So it was built, the stone portion of the house was built in the 1920s by two Mason brothers, and they loved all of the stone up from Lowell, just really cool. So we want to keep the charm of the house, and we did think about going up, would that be an option? But to keep the integrity of the house and also the quaint look of the house, going out to the left seems to make more sense. And we tried to make it really modest as well, with the bedroom sizes being modest and just enough so hopefully we can have a bedroom in our house, which we don't currently have, amazingly.
Now, you're living there full-time now, right?
Yes.
You're a year-round...
Oh, yeah.
As you bought it.
Yep.
And you look better than nothing, so there's not any question about the scam conversion? Because that's a...
No.
No.
Zero, zero interest in that.
Yeah.
This is our forever home. We don't rent it out.
Yeah, no, it's made of rented, and it, there's, there's seasonal tidings that only...
Oh, yeah, I got two months of the year. We're going to stay there.
Am I unheard of bedroom? I thought, I was wondering if that was it.
No, so they, they have it listed as a two-bedroom now, but there's really not a bedroom in there. Like, our bedroom right now is separated by a curtain, and there's no closet in there. And I think they had like a basement bedroom listed on the, on the plan, but it doesn't exist. There's nothing down there. It's just, it's open, so...
A king. Yeah.
Little king.
A lot of light gets in.
She's putting up with it, so that's good for now. We want to make it a little better for us.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
What else?
Yeah, just, just that we really put a lot of thought into keeping it modest and just to speak to that additional 48 square feet. If we were doing like a larger addition, like say 800 square feet, I think it would be much easier to say 48 square feet, get rid of it. Like, you know, we don't want to go through the whole process. You can do an easier permit. But where this is, when we tried to carve out that 48 square feet, it really cut into a lot of things. It cut into the space, so removing a closet from a bedroom or making a smaller walk-in closet. And so when we were considering how we want our space to look, but also down the line, what other people might look for in a house, the sizes that we considered for the bedrooms really were, you know, with like what the market and what people are looking for, but modest as well. And unfortunately, we have to add that four feet at 14 by four, four-foot hallway to get over the addition. So we can't carve that out, so we would have to be edging out the space. And these already, I keep saying modest. I hope you guys can understand why I'm saying that they're not grandiose in any sense. But carving into those was either taking out closets or taking down the space to where it felt really tight and just, you know, we wanted to save, hey, let's get that 48 square foot, because it's only 400 feet that we're looking to do it in.
Yeah, there's a reason why we're here.
Right, okay, that's me. I just wanted to make sure that you weren't just finally following the letter and saying, you know, and...
Absolutely.
Got to look at here, which 205, section 9, right? So we should have booked up.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure you guys saw that we do have E on the folder contents. That is the approval from the Department of...
Oh, the E, yes, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and Robert has that as well.
Right.
Yeah, so when, when there were, some of the requirements in here seemed redundant with, with the permit that we had to file with the DES. So we had to make sure that we have the buffer, the woodland buffer, and we had to make sure that no more than 20% of the property was going to be, you know, paved driveway. That was one that was new to me. So we did all the math on that, and, and the DES signed off on it as well. We're good with that. Yeah, that's...
The connective.
Yep, that's, it's the same, same with this. So it's all, it seemed a little redundant to me, but we're happy to go through the whole process again and do whatever it takes to make it happen.
Right. So did they do the computations on this DES permit? This is the first time I'm seeing it, the, as far as the area. I did a few computations on the surface coverage, but we'll get to that and then get the...
Did I read the whole here?
Sorry.
Oh, C, okay.
Oh, yes.
Okay. So...
So if, if I can watch this.
Just a little bit.
Yeah, you came up with close. Okay, so, set X of... Okay, yeah, you came up with almost the same numbers as I did for, for coverage area. But we'll discuss that when we get to the shoreline, if that's where that... We should read what 205.9A refers to and why we're needing a variance. Since non-conforming uses, it exists prior to the Act of the Board of Orders, may be continued, maintained, but very improved unless until such use becomes an imminent hazard to public health and safety. Non-conforming uses may not be expanded or changed to other non-conforming uses. Obviously, it's not changing for different uses, but this is an expansion of the non-conforming use. So that's what this, the variation, this, or the variance for 205.9A we had before. And then the other one would be for the shoreline, and as, as you said, it's a bit redundant to the state, but we will consider that also. So we don't want to come back. That was posted on the notes, too.
Yeah.
So that, as far as this first variance goes, that's pretty much on the, why you need to turn 400.
Just 42 feet.
42.
42, 48 feet.
48, sorry. Yeah, 400. So I guess I should ask if there's any questions, oh, any questions from the public on this? Comments from public? All right. So board questions.
I went, I went over and looked at the place, luckily.
Well, I went down and looked at it, and I had questions about how they were going to do it, but now I see how they're going to do it, so.
Yeah.
It's made of chat.
That's current information here, just... Well, we want to go on over to the criteria for this. I think that should be the next, for a variance. And yeah, let's see sheets out. And what we'll do is we'll ask you, one of them, to just let us know how you would answer this question. I think that would be the proper way to do it, since sometimes when developers come in, they will, they already know these questions and they do have to hear a response and we read it, so if there's anything that you haven't already mentioned, we can ask you about it. So this is petition for a variance for expansion of non-conforming use, or, yeah.
And the RSA number is the variance number?
The variance, yeah, the article number. Use, RS, not RSA, Article 205.9A. 205.9A. The property located at...
24...
24...
Great Pond Road.
Great Pond Road. I'm seeing Kingston. So that is map U4, lot 7. And after reviewing the petition and after hearing the evidence and taking into consideration the personal knowledge of the property in question, Kingston Board of Justice has determined the following. One, will there be addition value surrounding properties as a result of granting this variance? And do you want to address that at all?
If anything, we think that it would enhance the property value around us. We hope to do a really nice job and make the neighborhood look better, or if anything, the same, definitely not harm it. And we actually had a couple of our neighbors come over and say, after they got the better sort of... And we actually had a couple of our neighbors come over and say, after they got the address notice, that they were excited and hope it goes well.
Any board comments or just go ahead and vote. Okay, Rick?
No.
Megan? No, no means there's no diminution to the fact. And Megan?
No.
No, and I'm voting no. Larry?
No, and no for me.
Okay, so that passes with five no's. Uh, will granting this variance be a benefit to the public interest? It's kind of.
Kind of, kind of the same, but yes.
Same, same question, but, you know, not just a better, you know.
Well, we, we think also, like, we're gonna take care to follow the guidelines that the Department of Environmental Services gave us, so we know we're not gonna negatively impact our beautiful pond that we get to enjoy, um, and it'll certainly increase our.
Selfishly, of course, we'll, you know, we say, like, we'll be happier. We're happy people. We're gonna help others even more.
Yeah.
Is there anybody, uh, board, has a comment about that? Let's take, well, start on your side this time.
I think, I, there's no question that what they're gonna do is gonna enhance the value and, and the value of the neighborhood.
It will be something. Probably increase your tax base, but, you know.
We don't, we know it's coming. It's okay.
That's right. Okay, so you're yes, Larry? Um, and, uh, let's see, I'm yes, Megan? Okay, so that passes the answer five. Um, will little enforcement of the zoning ordinance result in an unnecessary hardship? And, uh, this has always been a very difficult one, because hardship really refers to hardship that goes with the land. There's something unique about this property that, um, would create a hardship if, if we, if we enforce this little notice that, you know, you can't go beyond the existing footprint. So, um.
I, I personally think it would create a hardship more because they could ameasily have gone up to a second floor without changing the footprint, which would have, I think, detracted from the beauty of that particular piece of property by the lake. So to hold them for forty-eight feet, I think, is unreasonable. So I, I would vote yes, that I think little enforcement would present a hardship to the property owner.
Okay.
And if you saw the property and after hearing the explanation, I can understand that the rooms in the property, I'm petrified. They don't have closets, so they're not bedrooms. So, you know, if you own a house and they have five rooms and no bedrooms, so I don't, I see that it would create a hardship if you denied them bedrooms.
I would agree. I looked at the listing online and tried to figure out where they were calling these bedrooms, bedrooms, and I saw the.
Zero.
And I was like, is that what they're calling the laundry room on this map? And it is, um, so I can fully appreciate and understand the request.
Rick?
Yes.
Okay, and I, I'm voting yes to it. Differented on the first one all the time around, but, uh, the, uh, I, I also feel that what's unique about this property that would create a hardship is that all these properties are fairly small and you have a small house to start with. It's not adequate for you, you're residents with bedrooms. And so I think that would be an unnecessary hardship to, to tell you that you couldn't expand to create a lovable house. Um, I'd vote yes on that one. Now, will substantial justice be done if this variance is granted?
Yes.
Yes, Ellie?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, and I'm voting yes, so that's five. And will use contemplated by the petitioner as a result of obtaining this variance be contrary to the spirit of the areas?
No.
I'm gonna say that also, because the spirit of the areas is, is obviously meant to keep people from covering lots, but, you know, near the shore, watching that support, or in this case, expanding on region. And this is classic petition with slight areas, so. And?
No.
Nope. Okay, so, uh, that is five no's, so, um, this passes unanimously and, uh, print your names, and then we will deal with the shoreline. You can read that.
All five criteria mean, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, beginning, the variance from the, uh, expansion and then shoreline criteria are, are more specific, so. Um, today's fourteen people. So, um, let's go to, here it is, two oh five point four B, the shoreline protection. Okay, so this is shoreline protection order, um, two oh five is the use, point four is the use regulations. B is the maximum lot coverage. Structures including pavement shall not cover more than twenty percent of any lot portion thereof within the shoreline protection issue. I don't think that we, no, we don't need to do a variance on this because you've already provided the math and matches what I did from your first drawings. And unless anybody came up with any difference, uh, the numbers as you can see from sheet C, um, twenty percent of the thirty thousand four hundred ninety-two square foot lot, um, would be six thousand ninety-eight point four square feet. And the total coverage after the additions, that includes the garage addition and the main house, is only forty-nine hundred square feet. So, um, what we voted here was that we may determine a second variance is required. However, unless I hear any objections to this, uh, I'm gonna point out that it's not required. Provided the, uh.
They need, they need the, the footage within.
They, they're meeting the requirements of two oh five point four, so, um.
So they don't need another variance in lot coverage?
They don't, we, we can vote to say that they do not need that, but, um.
I think maybe in the letter, the notice of decision, we recognize, it should be in the minutes. If the board discussed the fact that, um, calculated the lot coverage does not exceed the maximum.
It's not exceed twenty percent.
Okay, and therefore, when you send out the notice of decision, it should say the variance was granted and recognize that it meets the lot coverage requirements.
Right, and the other requirement was not for this board, but for the, um, D E S, and we provided that here. Is there anything I'm missing here?
I move that we grant the variance to two oh five point four, uh, two oh five point nine A for the expansion of a non-conforming use to allow for forty-eight extra feet on the addition to the house at twenty-four Gray Pond Road.
Second. Okay.
Say it again, I don't know about that.
I started saying it, you can second it.
Okay, so we'll say, um, both by Ellie and motion by Ellie.
And Megan. We're gonna get Kelly and Kelly mixed, don't we? Let's just start Kelly.
Yeah, second by Kelly and, uh.
I started Megan.
I've only lived next to you for two years, you're here.
Oh, and.
Oh, Peter, it's going downhill.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so you get the board to vote.
Yes.
Okay, so, um.
It's rookie's.
It's okay. Keep him in check.
Yeah, rookie. I've been on this board for a while.
You're doing good.
I'm, I'm really concerned that I'm missing. I tell you, I, I already realized at one point there, which it is I miss. Uh, we're required by state statute to determine, make a determination of regional impact, um, on every single thing that comes before us. If it hasn't been, well, even if it has been, I'm on the board. Um, I thought about it too late, but we can vote on this now, um, if I hear a motion that this does not require.
We have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, oh, sorry, we have a motion on the floor to pass, yeah, so all in favor of passing the, uh, variance?
Aye.
Aye. So that's the no's. Any extensions or? Um, so, so you've got the variance, you're clear on the shoreline protection act and, um, theoretically, it was supposed to make information of regional impact. If this were, you know, on a border or if, if it flowed into some other downstream or something, you know, that might fit. We, we theoretically have tried to do that and delayed this, while we know about other towns. But if I can get a motion that this is not meeting the requirements of regional impact, so, okay, second for me? Okay, um, put it to the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, that would be part of our procedures from now on. In front of me, so I forget.
Appeal.
Does that, yeah, thank you, thanks.
Um, do you wanna tell them about the thirty days?
Oh, thank you. Yes, uh, the regulation, sorry. There was a thirty day period in which this decision can be appealed. And so we usually recommend that you do not put any spades in the rammer or anything else, so that, uh, it gets appealed by someone, um, that you haven't, um, haven't started to work.
I'll keep the excavator in the garage tonight. No digging.
He's letting you know you're proceeding to our list, yeah.
You'd be surprised how many people will go tomorrow and stop working.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, good point.
And that's one who gets somebody appeals, because they didn't realize.
We had it, we had it from the last, the year last month, so they did appeal within the thirty days.
We'll dig when we get the permit.
You could, if you did start construction, you, you do so in parallel.
Right, right, exactly.
I mean, in theory, you could, if somebody did appeal.
Okay.
You get trouble.
Or if you have to say some system or strike, anyways, um, is there anything else?
Um, just, so this, um, Robert will get a notification of this and then we pick up the permit or it gets sent to us?
Uh, does it need?
I think you go in to get.
Go in to see Robert.
You'll get a letter next week from the board with the official notice of decision. Robert will get one, the permitting process can go, you can start that, go downstairs.
Great.
After you get that letter.
Okay, I can go down. Let's go. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
This was both our, this was our first, um, Z V A meeting.
I've been YouTubeing.
Hopefully you'll laugh.
You never know.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Have a great night.
Thank you. May we be dismissed?
Oh, go ahead, go home.
You're, you're fine. Have a good night, guys, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Before we, uh, conclude the meeting, is there anything else we can bring up, uh, you want the, uh, the votes, yeah, two big ones in. We recorded it all, so more or less we're clean, but not too quick with ours. Would it, would it, anybody else think of anything? Um. We're not gonna, um, email the, or, 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 just plain words, but.
Don't you go ahead and decide, email, do you, I would go ahead and.
Right, yeah, no, it's plain words, not with this, and I didn't know, it was a sudden, and, yeah, I would just.
Oh, it's a new system, I don't know how to play words with.
It's probably not what you need to do, I'm not sure.
You should have one as chair.
Uh, yeah, I've got one now, I don't, but.
But you, but you should have one for the Z V A.
Not that you all should, just for communication, so it's not all your personal. Right, I would say create my own Gmail, I think, just so that it's. Megan tells the V A, I do not have something.
I'll ask about the.
Ask, ask about.
That's not hard to, I think, once it is, she does it through block five, I don't know, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I have my son Kingston M H, it's the select.
Yeah, it's first name and last name, but, um, I'd worry.
After watching all those right to know things, we probably should all have our own Gmail.
I think that's why the label did it, is because of the, uh, right now. There's also, um, we should be very careful about. You know, you should follow, do you reply all?
Yeah.
Lots of people reply all, if you're discussing things like, you know, dates for meetings or something like that, it's not a good deal. But reply all of the consequences of a meeting and, um, can definitely not discuss, um, anything that's up before us.
By the same token, should something come up when we need an electronic mode, that should, copies should be, Susan, should be on those E O, wherever the recording site, there is, so that they can make copies and reattach it to the minutes.
But my contract would require a declaration of emergency, um, of, but, yeah, yes, yeah.
But there are, well, there are exceptions.
Right, yeah, so, well, you, we can, um, feel that if it comes up, but, uh.
You still have to, you'd have to, at the next public meeting, acknowledge them and, 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 and.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen that happen.
Peter, I'd also like you to talk to, uh, about putting something in the paper for alternate.
Oh, that is.
Yeah, for alternate positions, and then we can interview them.
Yeah, and, and.
Vote on them.
First of all, the planning was doing this and Heritage Commission, um, it's very tough to get on people, but, um, we do, should get a, uh, a request on our website and in the paper.
We, we had a lot of people for the, the solar, or.
Solar.
It was amazing, it was amazing.
That was a big.
Spark of solar and recycling, unbelievable.
So, you know, maybe that wouldn't work, maybe you have it in a paper, people sue you out, like, like, say, okay, I'd like.
We had it in the paper, that, we, technically, we have one alternate, Ben Ramano, who was on the board even before I was on, years ago. He's, he's got one year left on his appointment. You still could put two or three on, he doesn't come unless, when he's been asked to, Ted. So, he was a regular board member, and for the record, no one's been appointed that had served on the Z V A.
See that, yeah.
I said, Pete, I did not ask, bring forward any appointments except for people who had served on the Z V A as a regular city member. So it wasn't just a matter of being my buddy, just wanna make that clear.
I know what you're saying, that, that.
Same, that's same.
For, for large.
Which is why, I, I, and I, I, yeah.
Boy, voter.
I don't, Rick, I didn't know that. I came on when I was.
Yeah, I think, quite frankly, I've been doing this for years and I didn't know the procedures until.
Until recently, exactly correct, yeah, so, it's not a big deal, I have no problem, it's not a, not a big issue.
Um, I couldn't do it, so you're just looking for alternate members?
We're looking for alternate members.
Now, did you say the planning was doing this to?
Yes.
Me too, we just piggyback on yours and.
Um, you could, but.
I would do several.
I'd do several ones, because, yeah, and, cause. It, it's the same pot of people, but.
Yeah, okay.
We did several ones of solar and recycling.
No, lead law, chicken just came out.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 that was the best, because people.
I wouldn't do a legal notice.
No, definitely not, and the articles work well.
Yeah.
Just, first of all.
It's easy to put it on the website, I'll do that tomorrow.
Very, thank you. Um, all right.
What can I do with anything on that, if drafting?
Okay, well, I'll write something up and I'll run it by.
Of course. Grab it. Um, the President Robert and the webinar on Z V A handbooks, uh, you sent that out, right? Yeah, to everybody who were.
Right, Megan has her, we both have, yeah.
Okay, okay, that's the one that's booked and you've got the updates?
Yes, they're incorporated, those are the books that I'll make you that.
Okay, oh, that's right, okay, so these I already got, um, so, actually, do you wanna keep those?
Sure.
Change one or, um, and that's the only book that we get, there's the, um, Z V A handbook online.
Yeah, the land use book.
The land use book is downstairs, and, um, I think I handed them out, anyone of those?
Yeah, I think that would be good, uh, purple one, excuse me?
Um, they're not.
Yeah, or, or, sorry, or.
Is that what they called it? On the, uh, should I wait for her to come back to ask a question or?
Uh.
So the zoning ordinances that got voted on this past March, the one, um, about upland acres and.
So the zoning ordinances that got voted on this past March, the one, um, about upland acres and changing number of residences, what essentially did that do? When it passed?
That is a good question.
How do you define an upland acre?
Upland, upland means that it's not bad.
All right, so it is acre upland?
That there's, yeah, it's, there's a definition in the, um, site review procedures that require that you have a certain number of feet, square feet of upland acres or so. So if people can't build their wedding.
Can.
And count, counting, we have seventeen acre lot, fifteen acres is underwater.
It's like.
You've got to, one, one, with that, with your septic system and, um, yes.
It would be one article up in the paper that I just did not understand at all.
I, yeah, um, that, yeah, that's, I'll give you a minute of that, Wes, as to, um, right now, the housing crisis and the success that, uh, uh, this was. You know, people, that people use some of the areas that were inside the setbacks and areas for, parts of setbacks, anything that's below ground, not visible, not considered part of the, um.
Excuse me, Mr. Director. Can, uh, will you adjourn here?
Um, yeah, why don't we adjourn? I'll, we'll answer any other questions coming in. Let's check this, um, post, about that, um. Uplands, refer to the C T N, minutes, minutes. Um, so the uplands is supposed to be in the, uh, second, so how many years has been there? We get around, we get out.
There's only, there's only one right now, there, and he's got one year left.
One year, so, we, we get three year and two year, if we get, yeah, three year and two year. Yeah, so, but that'll be, we can decide that when we get out. All right, um, that's, I had anybody else? Um, discuss that, uh.
Oh, should I adjourn?
Yeah, okay. So Lou?
Yeah, you said.
You don't even have to do that.
Behind the, yes, to say.
Meeting is adjourned.
Meeting is adjourned, yeah.
Of course.
Okay, lock and run.